And get started, it's um four thirty-five or four thirty-four on Tuesday. Um and it's December, excuse me, December, it's February twentieth. I just want to recognize um. City Councilor Caterry Wolf, City Councilor Maria Perez, City Councilor Azida Govan. City Council and also member of this committee, Counselor Victor Davila. Also Brian Santinello, a member of this committee. Uh Attorney Justin Hurson, former city counselor. So City Council President Michael Fenton and our also our attorney, Attorney Kinsey. If I didn't miss anybody and Focus Springfield, thank you for um being on this call. Um now we just want to open up this meeting, um we have some items regarding Superintendent Elect Larry Akers. Um I know we discussed um this last week and one of the um issues that we had was we didn't have this on our on our agenda, so I proposed that we table this for for a meeting uh of today on today and we look to have Larry Aker Akers in our chambers tonight. Hopefully, we will we'll be able to pass um these changes that we're um proposing. So one of the the first uh items that we had was the the age um uh situation that we had to deal with, uh we know Larry is turning sixty-five, so we was looking to um puts the age requirement up to seventy, does anybody have any questions in in reference to that? All right, I recognize, I think, uh Counselor Govan had their hand up first, so recognize you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um so I don't know that I have a question about that or maybe just a comment. Um I know that he's turning sixty-five, so what that means, correct me if I'm wrong, is that in five years, if we raise the age to seventy, that then that he'll retire at seventy?
That is correct, that's the way, that's the way I understand it, yes.
Okay, so then.
But let me let me re- revert that, he has a four-year contract, um so at sixty-nine, he would actually be required to retire.
So he's he's gonna be, okay.
And correct me for wrong, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um so what you're saying is that he's going to be required to retire in four years?
My my understanding, yes, and Attorney uh Kinsey can correct me if I'm wrong and also um.
Counselor Benton, were you gonna comment on that?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chair, I I would just say his contract is for four years, but we're extending his eligibility for five years, so he's eligible to be a sworn member of the Plink Springfield Police Department if we pass this through age seventy. His contract will be for four years, but um that contract could get extended for another year without further action from this council, it's just seventy would be the, that's the longest the state lets us go.
Thank you, sir, and if I may, Mr. Chair, um so then my, I I think my only concern would be that um I don't understand why, um and I have nothing against uh Deputy Chief Akers. I think he's a fine man, fine police officer, served our city for many, many years. Um I don't understand why we're uh offering a position like a superintendent for someone who's only going to be there for five years at the most if we extend it. I don't know what that says for the continuity um in the department for the consistency that I think we need. Um Superintendent Claproot, who did a wonderful job, has been there for many, many years. Um and it's just very concerning to me that we're going to be having, right now it's going to be a big change, and then what we're saying is that in five years, we're gonna have this happen again. I've spoken to some police officers um in the department and they don't really um think that it's a great idea for this to happen, because they would like for there to be consistency. And those are my comments regarding that.
All right, thank you, uh Counselor uh Caterry Walsh.
Um thank you, uh Mr. Chair, you know, I was uh wondering, my question is, can't we extend the contract? Can we make it longer? Uh and are we restricted uh by state law? Because I'd like to see his contract be longer.
I guess I'll give the floor to Attorney Kinsey.
Yeah, you we could not go past seventy under the state law.
Okay, so even if we wanted to I'm I'm sure that he's going to do an excellent job, it's it's gonna be such an asset for the community to have him in 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 place. So even if we wanted to have him keep going, we would be prohibited from doing it?
That is correct.
Unless, you know, for the state law to change, you would take a vote of the legislature?
Well, this change is gonna take a vote also, um but the the statute that the state already gave us wording on says it's got to terminate at age seventy, that's just the.
All right, well, I will support the law as it is now, but we'll be open in the future to other changes. Thank you, LeVar.
You're welcome, um Attorney, uh Counselor, uh Chair, uh Chair, uh Michael Fenton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to, in in response to Counselor Govan's comments, I just wanted to highlight that Superintendent Claproot was only sworn in 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 two thousand and nineteen, so um her term, when she concludes it, will be less than a five-year term. And that is a, that is a longer term than her predecessor, um Mr. Barbieri, so uh just I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that.
Thank you, Counselor Fenton.
And we've also had, we've also had police chiefs who, uh we had one go to Milwaukee. It didn't last very long, I think he lasted a year or two, so I think uh this this is ample time for Larry Akers uh to do a great job, and I'm I'm a hundred percent behind this.
Th- thank you, Counselor. Uh Counselor Perez?
Yeah, I I think this is a question for Attorney Kinsey. Is any stipulation on the years that a superintendent um police officer should be when it's the, when it comes to the contract?
I'm I'm sorry, this stipulate, well, the state, under this provision that we have here, we cannot go past five years. There's no, nothing in the state law telling us how many years you can have, if that's the question, but we're not gonna be able to go past five years as the state law currently stands, Mariah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perez, I also want to recognize uh City Councilor Tim Allen. All right, so is everybody good on that first first item there? Okay, now, um I know it kind of went out a little late in the day today, did everybody get a chance to see the amendments that Counselor, Council President Mike Fenton sent over regarding um the Board of Commissioners? If you didn't see it, um just let me know.
I did not.
Okay, all right, uh Counselor Walsh, you have your hand up?
I think for the record, it would be good for him to uh tell us what it is.
Yeah. Co- Counselor Fenton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, uh so the the reason for the two changes to the ordinance is that the Police Commission ordinance currently states that the commission will have certain uh broad powers, including hiring and hiring and promotion. And uh that has never been uh the charge of the current commission. And there's been discussions in the past about some of the uh some of those matters being delegated to the police superintendent through a memorandum of understanding. And the goal with these changes is just to make it very clear that Superintendent Akers will have the same powers as Superintendent Claproot had. And nothing more and nothing less, so the the Police Commission will continue to have uh discipline powers, firing, uh including their subpoena powers and everything that was uh stipulated in that court case that we brought, but clarifying that we don't intend for the Police Commission to be selecting command staff and in charge of promotion and hiring decisions uh in the way that the that the ordinance currently contemplates, and the reason this has to come up now, because this was asked during the last meeting, well, why are we doing this now? And not before, well, the answer is that when Superintendent Claproot was uh chosen and was sworn in first as police commissioner, not as superintendent, the ordinance wasn't being enforced. Um much to the councils, this council chagrin, our chagrin, and uh and so ultimately after the court case it's was implemented, there is now a commission, and we're hiring hopefully Deputy Akers to take over as superintendent, and to do that, we can't have an ordinance that says, as it does currently, that his responsibilities will not include the promotion and hiring responsibilities for his command staff and other people within the department, so the purpose of these changes are to to clean that up and to just make it crystal clear that he doesn't have the discipline power, the firing power, that's gonna remain with the commission. Um but all of the other powers regarding strategy and deployment and hiring and promotion will be with the uh with the superintendent, and the reason for the the changes that came by today um which I apologize for them being so late, but we, the Law Department um reviewed them in addition to the draft that Attorney Shay and I had circulated and had some additional cleanup language that doesn't change the spirit at all of what we're talking about, it's the same thing, it's just they had some additional cleanup language that they thought was uh more clear, making it uh more clear that that was our intent and doing it in a way that was consistent with the ordinances and the DOJ orders, so so that's that's how I would explain it, and happy to answer any questions if people have any.
Any any questions at all?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counsel Davila.
Uh thank you, so sorry, I couldn't get my hand up. I just have a quick question, um just for clarity purposes. Are we talking about uh code chapter twenty-seven, twenty-seven, twenty-six, is that correct?
That is one of the two changes, yes.
So, um good evening, uh Council President, so you were speaking of, on what item were you just speaking on right now?
They both are intended to achieve the same thing, it's one of the, one of the sections deals with the section of the ordinance that deals with the Police Commission. And there's changes that need to be made in there, and then there's another section of the ordinance that deals with the police position of so-called police chief, and we needed to make changes in there too, because we don't have a police chief. That's why there's two chains.
If you don't mind, uh Mr. President, would you uh pinpoint to me where in either or of the new amendments specifically talks about superintendent retaining promotions? As uh uh promotions and hiring?
Well, let me call it up, hang on a second here.
Why he's doing that, I know Counselor Govan, you had a question or?
Yes, so um so what this is doing is this is changing the ordinance that the City Council put forth, um I think maybe five or ten years ago, is that correct?
I I wouldn't classify it as as we personally seen changing, uh we're just clean cleaning it up and still uh giving Larry uh a superintendent-elect the same powers that uh Superintendent Cheryl Cheryl Claproot has, so we're we're cleaning up the language um um in the ordinance.
Well, it's changing the ordinance then, because I know that when it initially um was put forth, the way the City Council put for put it forth, was that um the Board of Police Commissioners were going to be doing the hiring and the firing, and then as we know, you know, the ordinance got taken to court and then to the Supreme State Court. Um and then ultimately came back, and then we had a consent decree put in place. Um and then because the Police Commission had to be put in place legally um it was put in place, but for some reason, those, that language um wasn't adhered to, and it was taken out, and then the superintendent um got those powers. So we're changing the ordinance, sounds like it.
Well, Attorney uh Kinsey, could you speak to that uh from our, as being our attorney? Oh, I see, Mike, uh Counsel Fenton, yeah.
Yeah, if it's okay with you, Ken, I so I would agree with Counselor Govan, we are changing the ordinance, so I would, I would say that's a fair characterization, and then with respect to Counsel Davila's point um your question was where in the proposed language does it say that the police superintendent will be in charge of hiring, and that those are the changes? What'd you say, Counselor?
On promotion, hiring and promotion.
Hiring and promotion, um so that is the changes to section twenty-seven dash six. And in subsection C, that's where that intended language is, so it says the superintendent shall from time to time issue orders consistent with applicable laws, yada, 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 and the disciplinary decisions of the Board of Police Commissioners.
I see it, I see it.
And then it goes on to say for the managerial oversight of the Police Department, including command and control of all department members, professional staff, hiring, promotion, and assignment.
I see, uh so i- if I may, because I had the floor before, Mr. Chair, I thank you, Mr. President, I just guess I have a follow-up question to that is uh we, with regards to these other two amendments that have been put forward, I could see the logic behind it. Uh however, uh why don't we continue with MOU, because it seems to be that yeah, which by the way, I have questions, you know, itself about the MOU and the legality of the MOU. Because in my opinion, that's just changing the uh, we need to change in the laws, that is why some of the body has passed. And so I got questions on that, uh as to how legal it is, but with that being said uh why do we continue that, why do we have to codify this and take our time to really look at this, because even I I think there's questions about this uh, this uh these changes uh which are uh well-intended, without any doubt, but uh I just felt a little rush on this.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, you have the floor.
So, Counselor, what I, I would respond to that in two ways, the first is that um there are uh colleagues, I I I think yourself included, who have raised questions about the legality of the way that the MOU was handled, and so in fairness to Mr. Akers I don't, I don't think it makes sense personally, and I'm just one person, to to ask him to take responsibility for things under a contract that he's signing that the contract's gonna say, oh, Mr. Akers, you're in charge of hiring and promotion, but we have a a municipal ordinance that says the exact opposite, that you're not in charge of that, and please just ignore that for the time being and um, you know, rely on this MOU that has been publicly questioned in terms of its legality. And I don't, I didn't find that to be reasonable, and so for that reason, I think it's just in fairness to the hope ascending superintendent, just making it clear that we want you to be in charge of hiring and promotion. And we don't want it to be some side letter agreement, we want it to be the law. Um and then, and then if I may, just the second reason, um which I'm not really at liberty to get too much further in, but just to say that I I did receive um an inquiry from from a member of the of the General Court. So like the state reps and senators will ultimately be responsible for passing the home rule legislation concerning the years, and uh they expressed concern over uh passing special legislation at the State House to allow Mr. Akers to be in the position until seventy years old. If uh the city has a law that says that he can't even perform the responsibilities of the job that we're asking him to perform under the contract, so it was asked by that member of the delegation that we that we clean that up and that we make it, that we make it match. Um and for those reasons, I think it really has to happen now, because if he's gonna take over in the spring uh it, the special legislation still has to clear the State House process, which will take a few months, so that's.
Yeah, I I know, I will, I thank you, uh Council President, and I just asked this question, when does the uh, the uh Deputy Akers uh expected to turn sixty-five?
Uh, don't, Ken, do you know the answer to that?
I can get that for us, um I don't have it top of my head.
Yeah, we have that for the general meetings, I think that's important to us as well.
Yeah.
Uh uh thank you, uh Council President, uh thank you, uh Mr. Chair, there's some more questions.
I I thought his birthday was in April, but I could be mistaken.
Yeah, I'll check on that, I'll get it for our meeting for tonight. Um want to also recognize on the call now, uh City Councilor uh Tracy Whitfield and uh Counselor Govan, if you don't mind, if you want to go to Counsel Whitfield first, because she hasn't been heard yet, and then I'll make sure I go to you, all right, Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, uh Mr. Chair, and thank you, Counselor Govan, um so my question is, we went all the way to the Supreme Court for this decision to give these powers to the Police Commission, so it just seems to me like I don't know, it do seem rushed to me, like Counselor um Davila said, and I know that the intention behind it is because we're getting the new um Police Superintendent. So I would like to read what the General Court had to say, is that something you could share, Counsel Fenton? Cause I don't, I don't know, I don't understand, like, does his contract say he will be doing hiring and firing? I mean, hiring and promotion before we even change the ordinance, that would, that would seem premature, and then um I would just like to to see what they said, or this one particular body of the council, and then have we heard anything from like the city, the residents? Um have we did consider doing any tours or any type of communication with the residents of the city to see how they feel about it? Has that even been a?
Yeah, that's a good uh uh question for sure, Counsel Whitfield. Um yes, it has been considered on my end to to do that, however, we were we were up against the uh the timing of his of his contract um being signed, so but yes, that was definitely considered.
Okay, so when does, when's the timing of the contract, is it, is it April? May?
Uh Attorney, um uh Shay, when does uh Cheryl's Clapper, Superintendent Cheryl Clappert's uh contract end?
Um I'm understanding that it it's gonna end in April on her birthday.
In April on her birthday, do you know when her birthday is?
No, I don't, but she has to stop on that date, and I understand it's April, but again, I'd have to confirm what her birthday is, but the day she turns sixty-five, that's when it would end.
That's if the contract was over, so sometime in April?
Yeah, yeah, remember, that's my my guess as to her birthday, I think that's when it is.
Okay, and then the other question about being able to read what the General Counsel said?
Uh Counsel Fenton, do you? Counsel Fenton, you have the floor.
Sorry about that, I was stuck, I was, so um thank you, Mr. Chair, so uh Counsel Whitfield. I I I think, are you asking about what I was just referencing that somebody reached out to me?
Yeah, the home rule petition.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't a correspondence with, it was a, it was a, it was a state rep who reached out to me on the phone and said that they wanted to know that this was addressed, that's what happened.
And they want to know, because what, I don't think I quite understand why they wanted to know that.
Because like, again, I I trying not to get too far into it, because I can't really speak for other people, but it was my understanding that this person wanted to make sure that if we were passing a home rule petition, that the, that then this person would have to vote on in the State House that we were choosing a position for the person that could exist under the laws of the city of Springfield. And currently, the position of superintendent does not exist under the laws of the ordinances of the city of Springfield, and in fact, those powers are vested with the Police Commission. So for that reason, and this person and and others, I think logically, but this person specifically raised the issue and said, you know, I'd like to see that addressed, so I'm not voting on something in the State House that um is for a position that doesn't exist under the ordinances.
Okay, so the posit, there's no superintendent position, and that's what the home rule petition is about, to create one?
The home rule petition, I'm sorry, if it's okay with you, the home rule petition is to change the age to seventy, to allow Larry to stay until seventy, in the position of superintendent, which is the current position of Cheryl Claproot. That position does not exist under the ordinances, the ordinances say that we'll have a police chief and and a police commission, which is not what we have.
So Cheryl Cheryl Clapper was an illegal superintendent? Uh, because we ever really had the ordinance in place, so it was like a made up title? They gave her?
Uh I don't know what, how you want me to answer that, I I mean
It just wasn't a.
Do I think she's an illegal superintendent? No, I don't think she's an illegal superintendent. I I think that that title is the first time that it's been used, that's for sure.
Okay, so it was just a title, they, they didn't want to do chief or whatever we had under the ordinance. Not for you to answer, that's just me putting it out there, um how sometimes the administration do what they want um when they, and then it comes back around, and now we gotta do a whole bunch of legal stuff, so I was just like, how how did that happen with her, how did that title change happen if it wasn't under the ordinance at that time? Um and maybe it was just because we didn't pick up on it, but I I I was just like curious as to why that was allowed to happen then, and now we have to go through all this, and I understand the age change, I'm not against that at all, but I'm just like a little bit concerned that we fought to go to the Supreme Court and now, because I don't know for what reason, um folks want it really changed, um that we're going back back to change it, because that was a lot of work, mostly on you guys' part, because it was happening way before I even joined as a city counselor. Um so I'm just a little bit concerned, and then as far as the state rep goes, there's a lot of stuff that happened that's not yet an ordinance that's voted on on at the state level, that's not an ordinance on a municipal level that's not even approved on a municipal level, so I don't know if I quite agree with that, just like Juneteenth. You could choose if you wanted a ho- a ho- sorry, a holiday in your municipality or not. So there's things that's approved on the state level that's not necessarily um that's not necessarily approved on the on a local level, so I don't know if I quite agree with that statement, but I understand the position. I just don't agree with it, but thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield, um Counsel Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um so I guess following along the lines of what Counsel Whitfield just said you know, um the Port Board of Police Commissioners supersedes the police chief, it kind of like took the place, from my understanding, and I may be wrong. But it took the place of the police chief, that's why when the Board of Police Commission was finally allowed to be put in place, she didn't have a job, so this administration decided to create the position of superintendent so that uh Police Chief Claproot would still be able to continue working in that position. Um so I don't know about illegal superintendents um but I know that, again, that was a created position, which was supposed to be superseded by the Police Commission. And I would be interested to know what the Department of Justice would say about this and what the consent decree says about this, um you know, I know the consent decree talks about bringing any information to the community so that the community could be apprised, the community could have input. Apprised, the community could have input, um, and that hasn't happened in this situation, um, so I'm really concerned. That we're going backwards, um, and that we're not, um, keeping in mind the reason why. This esteemed body, many years ago, decided that Springfield needed a Police Commission as opposed to a Police Chief. And now we're going backwards and deciding that that wasn't the case? I don't know, um, but this is very concerning to me, um, because I thought that, you know. We're in twenty twenty four, we should be doing things differently, um, so that we don't keep getting the same results. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comment, um, Counselor Govan, uh, Counselor Davila. You're on mute.
Thank you, sir, I thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have a question, and, uh, I don't know if it's just for Attorney Shay, or maybe your, uh, beloved, um. Entrepid, uh, Council President could answer this question, uh, so I got two questions, one. In terms of, uh, if for whatever reason this, uh, appointment does not move forward. Who will command the Police Department? Do we have space, or is there language for acting Superintendent? Uh, that question is for Attorney Shay, or anybody that could possibly.
My understanding would be that if, um. We moved forward and this, this position was not filled. And the current Commissioner or Chief had to step down. The only other, what would be, I would assume what would happen is the next in line of command would temporarily fill that spot. Until an appointment was made to fill the position. The department isn't going to go without direction, the, the police, you, you got to keep in mind, because I. I keep hearing reference to the court case, the court case allowed. The city of Springfield to have a Police Commission, that's what the case allowed. Incre, it did not include language from the court as to how the Police Commission would be organized, and what it could do and couldn't do. That was developed within the city, so. This idea that the court established this, you have to understand what the court established was the right to have a commission. Not all the rules and regulations that go with it.
Right, of course, that's clear understood, but I do it my due diligence, Attorney Shay, uh, what happens if this does not move forward? Uh, I'm sure that somebody will fill the void, uh, on an intermittent basis, but legally speaking, how do we cover our bases as a city? Uh, do we, because I don't think, I just did a quick search, and I've been looking for a little while, I don't see any reference to an acting Superintendent. Um, is that person then considered this Superintendent, do we have to, uh, uh, award them a contract?
Well, if, if, to interrupt, if we had to put an acting Superintendent in, then we would have to devise a contract for that person. Uh, because they'd be stepping into a higher pay grade, so that, that would have to be done then.
But, but the position of acting does not exist, right?
It does not exist, because there's no need for it at this point in time.
So is there room for the Police Commission then to, to, to speak on this matter, make a decision if they, they need be?
I don't have an answer to that at my fingertips, but I would think the department, just like if a lieutenant or a sergeant in the Police Department. Uh, no longer has that spot and moves on, the police person in charge of the department is able to fill that void. We'd have to fill the leadership void.
Of course, but, but.
And the mayor, and the mayor would, is the one who appoints the chief, so I would imagine he would appoint the acting chief.
Right, this is a, uh, uh, I mean, I'm hoping and praying to the Lord that we don't come to that point.
Right.
Uh, however, uh, I think that, uh, Mr. Chair and Mr. President, uh, this is an issue that we need to look at. Uh, whether we codify it, or, uh, we make it, uh, into law, because I am very concerned. As to what will happen, because we don't, we can't create, there's no acting Superintendent does not exist, that's true.
You wouldn't have an acting and a Superintendent, you'd only get an acting when you lost your Superintendent, but.
No, no, clearly understood, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying, in the example, that we don't have Superintendent, period, no, for whatever reason, that may be, by the way.
That is something down the road, Counselor, because the issue in front of us right now is filling the job of the Police Commissioner when.
Well, I, I, I'm sure, I, I understand that's the issue, but it's a pertinent question, because like I said at the beginning of my location.
It's a good.
That if we don't, if we don't move forward with this, what will happen, because it will definitely influence my vote. The other thing, uh, and this is something that I, again, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, we should look at in the future. Uh, with regards to acting, or who will fill that void. Uh, uh, moving forward, so let's, let us be realistic, uh, with no, no offense. Uh, as we age, the likelihood that we are going to have a vacancy is very real, and so. With all due respect, I'm looking at it cold hearted and with very clear eyes, and I don't want to create a crisis in the Police Department. So with that being said, most of my other question, uh, Mr. Chair, the contract. So, as I'm sitting here, I'm looking at this, and I see everything, again, well intended, and what, uh. You know, moving forward, and, and, and tying up loose ends. We're basically giving a blank check, then, because the contract is basically only awarded by the mayor. And there, therein lies the, the devil. Uh, where, what is the contract going to say, I have not heard a peep about what the contract is going to say. I'm very concerned, the last Superintendent that we had before, uh, 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 Superintendent Claproot. Walked away with two hundred thousand dollars, because he wasn't given six month notice that he was not going to be reappointed. I'm very concerned with that, uh, we don't have two hundred thousand dollars to be given away, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars to be given away. And I know most likely you're going to say, oh no, you know, with the language, and. A lot of things can happen, so I, I, I don't feel comfortable, I'm a little jumpy about. Not knowing why the contract's going to be. Well, this is my comments, I know, uh, Mr. Chair, if you want to comment, or, or Counsel President, you seem to be well versed on this, um. I would love to hear some sort of feedback from anybody, thank you.
Your comments is well, uh, pointed well taken, Counsel Davila. I will also, um, before I open it, I want to add, I did have a, did have a chance to speak with, um, Officer Marty Curly. And also, um, Al Trang easy is going to be taken, taken over for the Chair of the Board of Committee, Police Commissioners. Um, they were invited to this call, but they sent me, um, a quote, uh, two quotes I have from, um, Marty Curly. Uh, he basically, uh, stated, uh, Deputy Chief Akers has the full support of myself. And the IBPL Local Three Sixty Four. Many of us have worked closely with Deputy Chief Akers, and he has, he has seen firsthand his dedication, commitment, and steadfastness. Leadership, working with the community, and everyone at all levels within the Springfield Police Department. And he basically said, we wholeheartedly support, uh, the change of the ordinance. And then also, uh, Al Trang easy, he's the Chair of the Board of Police Commissioners said, Deputy Chief Ak. Chief Akers is highly decorated and hardworking dedicated officer, his leadership and commitment to the community. In which he serves is commendable. Uh, so their support are, are behind, um, uh, Chief Akers. Also want to give, uh, Counsel Davila, April second is when, um. Uh, Superintendent Claproot's, uh, birthday, or for those that were asking. Uh, April second is when, uh, she, she turns sixty five. And then Larry Akers' birthday is twelve fourteen nineteen fifty nine. Counselor Fenton, your hand was up, I'll, I'll yield the floor to you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, uh. Counselor Davila, I forget what I was going to respond to. Uh, I'm sorry. You said at the end, there was something that you were thinking I could. Do you remember what it was? I don't, I don't remember.
Oh, I was just, uh, talking in generality about the contract, uh, that, uh, you know, I don't know what it's going to say. I expressed concern about, uh, uh, the Superintendent before Claproot walking away with two hundred thousand dollars. Because his contract wasn't renewed, we don't have the comment to be given away, uh, you know, and that's being a very proficient, uh, uh, able attorney, sir. Uh, you know that the devil is in the details.
Yes, thank you, so, um, and you were also talking about acting Superintendent, so, if, if we didn't. Pass this, meaning, by this, I mean, these, this package of three actions. Then we know one thing for sure, which is that Larry Akers will not be the acting Superintendent. Because state law will prohibit him from, uh, being any member of the force after age sixty five. So that we know for sure, um, if we take no action on the Police Commission. Uh, ordinance changes, but took action, for example, on the home rule legislation. We would be asking Larry and the mayor to sign a contract that says he's going to do things that the law. Says he shouldn't, and then we'd have to rely on the MOU, which I think all of us would agree, we're not the most comfortable. As to your question about the contract. Um, as this body knows, we don't have contracting authority, so the mayor. Um, is the one who enters into a contract with Mr. Akers, or whoever will be the Superintendent. Uh, just as he recently did with, uh, the CAFO. And so, those matters do not come before us for a vote, so we're not voting on Mr. Akers' this contract, we're just voting on the other. Three matters, the change to the law, and then the special act to allow him to have a longer age. With that said, I don't know that the contract's been signed yet, but I, you know, we can, we can ask for it, I don't think it should be. Too difficult to get a hold of it, especially if it's been approved by both parties. Is it, you say, has it approved?
Is it ready, is the contract?
I don't know the answer to that, because that would be, that would be the, the mayor's purview, but if it is approved. Then it would be a public record, and we could, we could get it, um, but I, I don't know the answer to that, I don't know that it's. I don't know that it's been approved and, and could be sent to us, if it is still the subject of negotiation. For example, things like salary, I know, that would not be. A document that they'd share with us until that was final, they wouldn't let us see the different iterations of that.
Right, uh, if I may, uh, Mr. Chair, just a follow up question, if I may.
Yes, uh, Counselor, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, uh, you know, uh, Mr. President, I'm just having the same thing in reverse now, I just totally had a blank. The, uh, so basically, uh, so, you know that, we know for a fact. That Commissioner Superintendent Claproot would, would must retire by April second. That's just being established here, she turned sixty five, April second, correct?
I believe that to be true, yes.
Correct, now. Deputy Akers, uh, turns sixty five in December fourteen, uh, twenty fourteen, thus. Going back to my original question about what will happen in the vacuum, Attorney Shay, if there's a vacuum of time, who will be. Uh, there's no acting, who will fill the void, what would do like, would that look like for the city? Uh, so here we are, February twentieth, I done three home rule petitions in my time at the City Council. With a blessing and support to all of you, uh, and, uh, something that you yourself, Mr. President, and we have a very proudly co-sponsored together. I'm very proud to have worked with you and that, and many other things in the future, uh, and that took a long time to pass. So, are we asking what powers to be is going to move this forward in less than a month?
Well, I mean, if I can, Mr. Chair, if that's okay.
Yes, the floor is yours.
And by the way, Counselors, I apologize for monopolizing so much time here, I just, you know, I, I, I don't get, I won't get to speak tonight, so if there are things that I can address. I'm trying to address them, I'm not trying to, you know, be a know it all over it, I certainly don't have every answer, but, um, so. Is it enough time? I hope so, and I believe so, I understand that, uh, Representative Williams has agreed to be. Uh, sort of the ambassador for this, and trying to get it through the, uh, House of Representatives, and. Through the necessary Senate approvals, I do understand that it, that requests of this type. And by this type, I mean, age increases on limits for people who are public safety officers in municipalities. Are standard, uh, procedure for the General Court, this isn't a, a substantial charter change, or something that would require. A, a high level of review by the State House, I think this is a pretty, um. Normal request that they field regularly, and if they can't get it done by Superintendent's. Claproot's intended retirement age, then I would say the mayor's got a big problem he's got to deal with, and I don't know how he would deal with it, but, um. I mean, based on the information that I've heard and been given, it, it seems like they're reasonably confident that there is enough time to do it. But to your point, time is sort of of the essence, and we can't afford to, you know, wait another few weeks to get it down there.
Yeah, those goes back to what I said, of me feeling rushed with this thing, because I, I, I got a plethora of questions, we're going to need like. Quite a few hours to, to, to get them settled, uh. I hate being in this position, I, I really do, uh, and I know that we all here doing our best, and I'm sure that Deputy Akers. I, I don't know him, but I know of him. And this is not necessarily about him, because that was, it's entirely up to the mayor's brain. Whether we like it or not, he's the one that, uh, chose Deputy Ak, not us. In front of us is, he's the home rule petition and the changes that are being proposed. And so, this is going to be qualified, second, secular. Until forever, and so, I, I. I like to do my due diligence, like most of us, and so, I just want to put that on the record, that I'm feeling a little rushed on this, uh, and that's not how I operate. Uh, so, but anyways, I, I would love to, uh, continue this conversation, I'm sure we're going to have a very robust, uh, meeting today. And looking forward to, to more back and forth and input. Thank you, Mr. President, like I was calling a gentleman, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Davila, for your due diligence, appreciate the questions and, uh, uh, commentary. I'll go to Counselor Whitfield and, uh, Counsel Walsh. Did I see you, Counsel Govan, as well?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, so, I just want to, like, back up a bit, and I am totally not against the appointment. Of, um, Deputy Chief Akers whatsoever, I'm not opposed even to, um. Him having the authority, I'm just wondering, like, we. We as a council went through so much, and then created this ordinance that says, this is what the Police Commission is going to do. And now it's kind of like, okay, this MOU came out, and then there's a whole backtracking. Based on the MOU, now we want to do what the MOU says, and that's kind of like what the administration is putting forward. Because they're the ones who created this secret MOU, because it wasn't presented to the City Council until it was questioned. And now we want to do exactly what the MOU says, after fighting for so long. For this Police Commission, and to put the ordinances through. I'm not against, um, promotion and hiring of the, um. Of the Superintendent, or even of the role being created, but did we ever consider doing it jointly? Can the Police Commission and the Superintendent, um, be over hire and firing? Does it have to be one or the other, um, has that been a consideration, how can they do it in unison? Um, because there was a reason and a purpose that those particular powers were taken from, um. The Police Commission, something wasn't working that we liked, and then the change came. And then we created the ordinance, and then the MOU came out, and now we want to backtrack on what we put in place because of this MOU. This is just my opinion and my feelings as I see it, um, and so I don't really like that. I don't really like what's being done, and it has nothing to do with the appointment of Deputy Chief Akers whatsoever, his age change, the home rule petition. It's the ordinance piece for me, it's like, why did we go through so much to turn around and change it? To based on what the MOU says, why did this happen?
So, it's a great question, um, I will actually yield the floor to, uh, Counsel Fenton.
If, I mean, he may not know, I mean, I'm not.
But he had his hand up, so, yeah, I know, I pause, uh, he, he raised his hand, I thought he had a answer, he may, he definitely been, I know, so I know.
Understand, I'm not going to agree with something the administration snuck into place, um. Just because they want it, I'm not doing that, there was a reason that we took these particular powers away from the Police Commissioner. And gave it to a Police Commission, and now we're backtracking based on the MOU, I don't like that, that doesn't sit well with me. Um, I want to know why, I want to know why we want to all of a sudden change what we went to court for and put in place in the ordinance, and then. I want to see, can, can it be a hybrid, can they do it together, can we do it jointly, can we put those word, that wording in place? Okay.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield, now, to, to, to some of her, uh, comments, uh, Counselor Fenton, do you want to respond to that, or if not, I'll go to Counsel Walsh.
If it's, if it's okay with, with her, if that's okay with you. If it's, if it's okay with, with her, if that's okay with you, Counselor.
Then I have one more point, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I want to hear from you. I just, I want to know how this all transpired.
Yes, okay. So just from, just my perspective, I'll give you the sort of history here. I drafted what is the current ordinance that is the police commission that was passed and we overrode the mayor's veto pretty much in the months that were immediately before then Deputy Barbari, soon to be Commissioner Barbieri's swearing in ceremony. And when we put that ordinance together, it was done as a result of years of drafting in public community meetings that we had going back to Rebecca Johnson with E. Henry Twigs and a stenographer and Ed Bakul and blow down drag out fights over this subject. And when we started the debate, the policy objective was always to do two things. It was to give the commission subpoena power, which they did not have, and to give them control over discipline and firing in the department. That, those were the major policy outcomes that we were looking for at the time. And the administration would not buckle on either. Over time, they did agree to give the subpoena power to a board that was similar to the Board of Police Commissioners, but not that. They called it many different things, but the last version was the Civilian Police Oversight Review Board or something like that. And, but the board only had recommendation powers, not binding enforcement powers. And we saw some really public and damning examples of how that caused distrust in the public and problems with policy implementation. And ultimately, I helped recruit pro bono counsel and drafted an engagement letter and the council voted and authorized me to engage with them. And we dealt with attorneys lesser and Alio on bringing that case all the way to Supreme Court and we won. What was brought to the Supreme Court was the Ort, the Massachusetts Supreme Court, was the ordinance that was passed right before Barbieri was sworn in. And that ordinance revived word for word the prior version of the police commission from the late nineties and early two thousands, right before the control board. And that ordinance included in it the hiring and promotion powers, which was not where we started the policy debate a decade before with our prior versions of the ordinance. The reason that we reverted to the old draft from the nineties was that the police union at the time was saying that they would not support the endeavor, meaning that they wanted to collectively bargain these changes to the ordinance unless we made it so that they had both the carrot and the stick. They had the promotion and hiring power and they had the suspension and firing power. And at the time, we were in no position to be negotiating around the union on this question of collective bargain. So we agreed, this is my, just my one person's perspective. We agreed to put that in there, in particular, to pacify the police union, who's no longer taking that position. And in addition, to utilize every possible tool that we could have in litigation to negotiate to get what we really want, which was the discipline and firing power and the subpoena power with an independent police commission. So when the case came down, we got that. And certain of the other powers, mainly everything else, was delegated through the MOU to the superintendent. And I know that when that happened, there was a lot of concern over that and some feeling that it was not done in the light of day, if you will. And maybe some of those feelings are, are warranted. But at the end of the day, I personally was not overly exercised about it because what they were delegating were things that I personally never really intended or cared about them having in the first place. I always believed and I thought that others had the same consensus that it was the discipline power and the firing power that we were really after. And that the hiring and promotion power is just not a practical power to vest in the commission. And so since then, we've had Superintendent Clapbrood, we've had a police commission that has not asserted itself and said that they want to be in charge of these items or demonstrated that they have the capacity to be in charge of these items, meaning hiring and promotion. And so now it's time to change superintendents. And when I got that call from that state rep who highlighted this point to me and said, what are you going to do about this? I said, you know, we got to find a way to tighten it up and make it match what we had for Superintendent Clapbrood. And it was my feeling that, that every, well, maybe I don't have this right, but I thought that our policy goal was to get Superintendent Akers the same powers as Superintendent Clapbrood and to get, make sure the police commission had disciplined powers only. If there are members of the council who feel that they share a different policy perspective and they think that the commission should have certain promotion or hiring powers and that those powers don't belong with Superintendent Akers, then, then they shouldn't support this ordinance because it would do the exact opposite of that.
Thank you, that was a great, a great recap of everything that took place. I was actually here before attorneys lesser and I think, I forgot, Alio was hired. So I was kind of here on, on, on that part of it. So I can understand what you're saying, but here's my fear. We change the ordinance and we get a new superintendent that we just really don't appreciate their hiring practices or their promotion practices. Because I can honestly say that I didn't agree with all the hiring and the promotion that Superintendent Clapbrood did and how some, some of that came about based on some of the internal information that I, that I came across later. And I don't think that, like, I think that the ordinance was created for a reason and, and the police commission, if, if it's something that they don't want, then maybe they're not the right choice. I mean, because it's part of the job, it's part of the commission. And you, I mean, the police commission, while I respect them and appreciate them and their volunteer position, they knew that what they were stepping into. This was part of the ordinance since they've been there. And now to say, well, we don't want that part, but we want this part? I don't, I don't think that that should be a choice. Here's the job. When you apply for a job, you don't say, this is the part that I want, this is the part that I don't want, so hire me anyway just for this part and not that part. That's, that's just not how it works. The rules, the ordinances are put in place for a reason. And I think there should be more community input as to what the community wants. And I also agree that maybe we should get some input from the Department of Justice. But I'm not opposed to the new superintendent having the powers jointly to do hiring and promotion with the police commission, but to strip it and then we getting superintendent that, you know, may not be acting in the best interest of all police officers. And now we're back at the drawing board. And, and like Counselor Govan said, that's, that's taking us right back to where we were from the beginning. And I definitely wasn't happy about how the MOU came in because we didn't know about it until something came up. And then I think in the MOU, didn't she have disciplinary powers to Counselor Fenton or just hiring and promotion?
I, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Oh, yeah, but it was a sneaky tactic. And so to avoid sneaky tactics, I think that we need ordinance that supports the community. And when MOUs like that come about, that's something that the police commission before signed and should make public. Like, these are the type of rules that I want to see in the ordinance. So we have more oversight as to what's happening in our police department. And I, I can't say that I a hundred percent trust anybody to do a hundred percent the right thing all the time. Like, I don't know if that's feasible. And I, I love Deputy Akers and I trust him, but I think that there could be more of a compromise with this ordinance. And I think having joint responsibilities could be a solution. Thank you, Mr. President, I mean, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. We'll go to Counselor Walsh and Counselor Govan, I see you, I got you. Counselor Walsh.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for holding this meeting. We got some great questions and issues here, but my question is one on procedure. The issues that are before us tonight, we're voting on three issues, correct? Do all three have to pass in order for Larry Akers to be appointed?
So we have three issues, I just want to kind of broke up. We have three, we have three items on the.
Do all three items have to pass with the majority or whatever is required in order for Larry Akers to be the new superintendent?
Um, my understanding would.
What we want.
Yep. My understanding was yes, but I would, I would yield to our attorney and or Mike Fenton, if you know the answer to that.
Well, I, I would say yes, because if we don't pass all of it, then we're asking him to take a position and job responsibilities that the law says he can't have.
Okay, well, I think, I think we need to know that before the vote is taken. I think that'd be helpful. But, you know, to, when I was listening to Counselor Davila, my thoughts were in a department like the police department, there's always a chain of command. So I think if they have any vacancies, they would be able to deal with them.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I heard a couple of things. So the, the, the position of superintendent was created for Chief Clapbrood, who was then the, the chief. So aren't we supposed to like make that legal kind of? Because it was just made up, right? So that's one thing. And then what Counselor Whitfield said, the, you know, going forward, I just lost my train of thought. This is a lot, right? And going forward, that's where I'm trying to look. Going forward, I want to know what's going to happen, right, going forward? If there's no superintendent of a position that was made up, then I would imagine the responsibilities would go to the deputy chief, which we have plenty of right now in the department. I believe we have Deputy Chief Akers, we have Deputy Chief Daniels and others. So the MOU that came about, from my understanding, the way that came about was that the commissioners were asked to sign a document stating that they were on the police commission, but in reality, it was the MOU, which was very sneaky, like Counselor Whitfield said. So I feel like there's a lot of unanswered questions. The community has not been made aware of what's going on and what's happening. So I think that, you know, for me anyways, I feel like we need to, we have until April second. I wonder if there might be a way for us to, you know, put this off until maybe the middle of March, where maybe we could have a couple of meetings with the community to see where they stand. I'm sure they're going to love that, you know, Deputy Chief Akers would be the next superintendent. But I think we need to first figure out, do we want a permanent superintendent position in the police department? Is that something that we want? Is that something that we need? And then the Board of Police Commissioners, they never gave up their powers. They were taken from them when they had them sign the MOU, which was very sneaky. And then they found out, wait a second, this is what's happening and this is what's going on. So, you know, as we know, the commission has been stalled for years in court. You know, you guys had to veto the mayor's refusal to do it. And then they took them to court, then the Supreme Court in Massachusetts. So, you know, this commission has been wrought with backlash and resistance by the administration. So I think we need to tread very lightly, you know, when we do things like this. Because, you know, whatever we decide today, if this is the issue, if we're going to extend it to seventy, that's a permanent change, right? That home rule petition will be permanent. So that means that, is that true? No, thank you, Counselor Fenton.
So that's for, that's for Larry.
Just for Larry, okay, thank you, Mr. President. So then that, that gives me a little bit of ease. So I appreciate that. But again, you know, I know that, you know, another, other things will come up. I, I feel like we need to have consistency. You know, I know that, that we've had different chiefs and different commissioners in the police department over the years, but it doesn't sound like they've been very consistent. And because of that, we have a DOJ investigation that found, you know, the, the blatant racism in the department. And because of that, we have a consent decree. So now I don't want us to have to go back. I don't want to, I don't want to have to, you know, repeat history. We need to learn from it. So moving this very slowly, I agree with Counselor Davila, it seems a little bit rushed, like we have to, you know, do it immediately, like some of the, the meetings that we had regarding the, the budget and the, the three caps that we had to give away immediately. It does feel a little bit rushed. So I would just caution us to, to, to move, you know, move slowly so that we can make sure that we're doing the right thing for our city. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Govan. Counselor Davila.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I state my, my point, I would like to sort of comment on the question that Counselor Walsh posed and what our beloved president. In my opinion, I think that not all three items have to pass today in order for this to go forward. If, say for example, if we pass the home rule petition and know the other two items or two proposed items, then in essence, what was going to be happening is that Deputy Akers will be operating with the same set of toolboxes that Chair Clapbrood has had. And she will be operating under, I believe will be, whether it's a new MOU or the existing MOU. So I don't think that we need to pass all three items for this move, item to move forward. That's just my own personal humble opinion on that one. I do, however, feel very obligated to try to find a word that is not too strong. I want to say warn this council, but what's the word that I can use? To, to remind, to put into alert this wise and humble body that although I understand the, the thoughts behind giving discipline and firing to the commission and giving promotion and hiring to the superintendent, I understand. Here's my biggest concern with that. About a year ago or less, our beloved state Supreme Court took away the court mandate. And they no longer have, they have to go by the civil service test, but they no longer have to offer a position, one to a, a, a non-minority, one to a minority position. As I stand here today, that makes me uncomfortable because I think if we're not careful, and I don't want to personalize this to Deputy Akers, this is not about Deputy, this is about the position itself. Let us not forget, if this is passed, it's going to be secular, secularal that we may end up with a department that does not reflect the community in which you and I live, work, fight for. And it's going to be a cold dang hell before I'm going to allow that to happen. We have made great gains in so many levels, but I am deeply concerned with this. Are we going to end up with a complete different police department? I'm sure somebody's going to tell me, Counselor Davila, don't worry about it. Demographics are changing. The demographics are, we are now a minority, majority city. I don't buy it. I do not buy that argument. We must be careful. I don't know what a compromise lies, to be honest with you. Maybe we give the promotion just to the superintendent and the hiring to the police commission. Maybe you could do that, I don't know. But that's a whole different issue apart from the home rule petition from Deputy Akers itself. I just felt very strongly that we had to say that. We need to be careful here with what we're doing. Otherwise, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Davila. Point well taken. I see your hand up, Counselor Govan, is it from before or do you have it up again?
It is from before, my apologies, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Whitfield, are you, you have your hand up?
Yeah, it was, it was from before also. I just want to say if we can get creative like Counselor Davila said and maybe consider giving joint power to both the police commission and the police commissioner. I don't know how folks feel about that, but I think that we can be more creative so that we don't have to change. I don't know how folks feel about that, but I think that we can be more creative so that we don't have to change the ordinance back to the way it was before. I don't know. But that's my final comment. And to have a community meeting. That's it.
Yep. Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I thank everybody for their commentary on this, on this issue. And I'm looking forward to, to the meeting tonight.